Okay, ladies and gentlemen, and a big surprise. We continue to celebrate Councilman Anthony’s birthday here, and it will go on for a long time. But we brought back, all the way from Reno, came in specially. Councilman Creer did not take the full day. He came back specifically to sit next to you today on your birthday. Councilman Creer, come on in.
Take a special entrance?
[laughter] He’s your city birthday gift. I love it.
Took the red eye for a red actor yet here.
Wow, do you know that. Okay, we’re on to Agenda Item 12. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council will not respond or engage in dialogue. Everyone will have one minute, please. Madam Clerk, as you’re decorating your little space there. Okay, if you’ll mention, say your name and spell it if it’s difficult.
We can barely hear you, ma’am.
You can hear, cannot hear us?
No, it’s, the volume is turned down.
Oh.
Volume’s turned down.
Volume’s turned down, can the volume come back up?
Name is Daniel Braisted, B-R-A-I-S-T-E-D. This is a matter of old business. You weren’t here in December. I presented three resolutions that I wanted consideration. I haven’t heard anything about it. I presented a major challenge of attempting to talk to people at the courtyard. I even offered to pay the lady’s salary double. Two employees followed me out, got my information. I have heard zap.
Okay.
I would like to help the courtyard.
Thank you.
How do I do it?
Okay. The very simplest thing is I’m going to ask our city manager to make sure that you get a response with the holidays and everything else and the meetings, both in town and out, that we’ve, I can understand why it was difficult to get through in December and so, or I can ask, Dr. Hibbler, if you will, the lady, the beautiful lady in pink, if you will step aside with her.
Thank you, ma’am.
She will make sure you have it. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I am here today to make comment on Item 71 on the agenda.
Okay, then you want to forego your space at that time. I’m going to take public hearing at that time.
You are going to?
Yes, but it’s either now or then, not both.
Okay, so now I have a decision to make.
Yes, that’s what we do every day.
I know, okay. I think I will go ahead and make my public comment now.
Okay, and that’s a full minute, and we’re going to do the same thing at the Agenda time. It’s only going to be one minute, too.
Also, okay.
Okay, please state your name for the record. That doesn’t count as part of your minute.
Thank you. My name is Elaine Winger-Raisner. I reside at 9811 Orient Express Court, and I’m here today as President of the HOA of the Queensridge community. And I would like to submit a seven-question survey that the Board of Directors did in the Queensridge community. A total of 967 surveys were sent with 468 surveys returned, giving us a 48.4 percent return rate. A brief overview of the survey is number one. An overwhelming survey, an overwhelming support at 82.6 percent of the open space ordinance that ensures citizen input and requires impact studies in an effort to aid the City Council in making responsible decisions. Number two, there is a strong support at 95.7 for the city to require potential developer not only to meet with impacted residents, but to prepare a report and address their concerns and possible resolutions before submitting a development application.
Thank you.
Also noted is a strong support.
That’s it, sorry, that’s it. So if you want to leave that with our city clerk, the list and a copy of the survey, that would be welcome. Thank you very much.
Okay, that’s the copy for the city. Thank you.
And if your last name is difficult, could you please spell it for the clerk in your minute? Thank you very much. Your minute doesn’t start till after the details.
Thank you. I can’t be here this afternoon, so thank you for this opportunity. My name is Gordon Culp. I live at 653 Revel Court in Queensridge, and I’d just like to very briefly remind you of the type of public comments that you received in this original motion. The ordinance was voted on on November 7th. There were petitions submitted with 181 signatures in favor of the ordinance, 61 emails. Fifty-eight citizens took time out from their busy lives and showed up to testify that day. Then in response to the current motions, you’ve received 97 other emails, 96 of which are opposed to the repeal of the ordinance. So 96 to 1 ratio is pretty unusual in today’s environment, showing strong favoritism toward retaining the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Culp. Morning.
Good morning. I’m Ann Smith, 653 Revel Court, but I’m also speaking for a friend who’s in desert shores, so.
No, we’re just staying with one minute.
I know. I just wanted to let you.
And that dialogue didn’t count, so if you’d start her now, thank you.
Thank you. So I’m urging you to vote no on the repeal of the open space ordinance 71 and then the replacement 73, but if it is repealed, which I’m anticipating, then on behalf of our street, which is Revel Court, and also I ask that you only approve in the future density of development on Badlands that’s compatible and complementary to everybody in the area and the surrounding area, and not stress the infrastructure around our entire neighborhood, and also on Charleston and on Rampart and the schools. So that’s what I’m asking, because I don’t feel like any negotiations are going to work with the neighborhood and the developer at this point on past experience, and you’re the only ones that hold any power to get something in the area that’s going to be decent.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right there is fine. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jerry Engel, and I reside at 700 Ponchatrain Drive, 89145, in the Badlands. I’m here for just two items. Number one, to express my objection to Items 71 and 73. We really put a lot of effort in getting an ordinance that we think is good for the whole county, and there are people now who want to piecemeal it and break it out where it is not good for everybody. The other item is, Mr. Summerfield addressed us last month at a hearing with Councilwoman Siemens, and I asked him, why is there so much storage a few hundred feet from my home? And he said, there has been no permit allowed for the contractor or the owner to bring storage facilities and conduits and all on the property. I sent pictures. It’s still there. He said, there was never the right for the builder to do that. It’s an eyesore, and I ask the council to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Engel.
What do I do with this?
Right there would be fine, and the black box there is good. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Dale Raisner, 9811 Orient Express Court. I’m here to vote my, voice my opposition to Items 71 and 73. I feel like, and I’ve mentioned this in the past, the ordinance provides a framework and some guidelines to kind of prevent the unending chaos that we’ve gone through for the last four and a half years, specifically at Queensridge. But in addition to that, more specifically within that repeal, there’s language to change the definition of open space, and I feel like that is totally unfair. We bought near land ourselves. There’s other people that probably have too, that has open space designations, and to change that after the fact marginalizes existing homeowners, and I don’t think it’s fair, and it should not be tolerated.
Thank you. Good morning.
I’m Herman Allers. I live at 9731 Orient Express Court. I’ve been here a few times before over the last three years. I want to express my objection to repealing what we voted on, worked hard on, on the previous ordinance. I don’t think it is illegal. I don’t think it is unfair. However, I have heard that some legal people with the city feel that if they would repeal it and make it more liberal for developers, that would help in the lawsuit against the city, which I think is absolutely not the case. My most important issue with any type of ordinance that we should end up with or agree to, that it should state, have an amendment, that any development done within an existing community that’s been in effect for 25 years will make sure that that development will not exceed height limits, existing.
Thank you. I tried to give you an extra second or two to get to your point, so thank you very much. Appreciate.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Good morning, Mayor. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
My name is Ron Iverson. I reside at 9324 Verlaine Court in Queensridge, and I’m as a member of the HOA board, but I’m here speaking to you this morning as a resident. I urge you, as my former speakers have said, to not to repeal the current open space ordinance. First, the ordinance was based on best practices from across the state. We put, or the United States, put a lot of time and effort into trying to get the rights in and in place to preclude a lot of chaos that had include the last four years before that. Secondly, we’ve been told that it was considered onerous by developers. When we queried a number of sources around City Council about what developers considered it onerous, we got, we did not understand anything. No developers were named. We heard that it was discriminatory, and I ask, what’s discriminatory about an ordinance that provides transparency, a process and requirements developed, and provides equal rights to?
I’m sorry, that’s the end. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Corey Mays. I’m a city resident, and I’m here to hope to convince you to vote no on your number 17. Basically, what we’re doing is we’re changing out our models. We’re going from a different service and trying to reduce them down, and we’re claiming to save a lot of money. What I’ve found is, is that for me, potentially during the time period, that switchover is going to cost me about what they’re going to save the first year. That’s just those two days. You start doing this comparison over any length of time, the savings doesn’t actually add up. I did a five-year period and looked at the totals. Basically, I’m going to make almost $7,000 more if I was to stay with the fund we currently, I’m currently with. What it actually would benefit us to do is to move to Nationwide and give us the option of extra investments, not actually lose this one. And also, the variation to the totals that they have on their calculations are very, are not done with any reduction, and then it gives us a bad run against what the totals are.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And anyone else, please come forward, and if you would, it would help. And Tony Johnson, are you here?
Yes, ma’am.
Okay, I have your card, ma’am. Could you wait one moment, because I do have his card right here, and I’ll be right with you after that. Please, Mr. Johnson, if you’d state what Agenda item you’re addressing.
I didn’t know what Agenda item, but it’s on the homeless situation.
71?
If I.
Seven, zero. Okay.
Okay, thank you. My name is Tony Johnson. My address is 6113 Steibor Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. I’m a retired correctional officer, and I’m here as a mental health provider. My question is, are there going to be funds available or grants available for, to assist the homeless providers in, with the homeless situation? How much is going to be available and for what areas? And when are the dates for the applications?
Okay, what I’d like you to do is get the card back, if you could. Put your address, phone number, information. We will give it to Dr. Hibbler, who is in charge of the entire project, and certainly since you already are a mental health provider and helper, certainly we want to get those who are advocating for the homeless to get involved. Just not speak, but be involved and part of helping us help others. So if you will do that, and Dr. Hibbler will take your card, she’ll be in touch.
It’s already on there. My name is Anthony. Thank you so much.
Tony Johnson, right?
Yes, ma’am.
Fine, thank you.
I also have, I guess, finances available to assist, and I just need some more assistance.
She’d love to hear from that. So good. We love help financial as well, and Kathy Thomas-Gibson, you found her or she came up so quickly. Thank you. Ma’am, I’m sorry. Yes, please.
Good morning. My name is Carmella Gadson. I actually work at Battleborn Progress as a story bank organizer, working with people who are currently homeless to understand what they are experiencing as they’re trying to get jobs, trying to get apartments, people who have disabilities, who are receiving SSI benefits but cannot afford, excuse me, cannot afford affordable housing. I’m opposed to Agenda Item Number 70, and at this point, I feel that you are planning to move forward, and in doing that, I hope that you will make it easier for people to cope with this particular ordinance and think about reducing the fine and misdemeanor status of violating the ordinance and the law. If a person can’t afford to eat, they can’t afford $1,000 or a misdemeanor. And so you can park your car for $25 fines to $100 fines, but if you sleep, it’s $1,000, and so I hope that you create some equity, because we are advocating for people who have nothing. I’ve met a person who’s living in a sewer. He’s living in a sewer, trying to clean windows and make a living, and so as we, as you do what you’re already planning to do, please think about making this fairer for people, so they can afford to pay the fines.
We’re going to start, you’re down to your minute. We’re going to start with you helping us. So your card, please put down a phone number that we can contact you.
I did.
And we’re going to get you involved in helping. We know we’re helping.
I’m already involved in helping.
Then continue to do so. We’re doing it on every, every aspect of this. We are absolutely about helping the homeless that we can get back into a healthy life. So thank you very much for caring. We appreciate it.
Can I just ask a question before I go?
No, I’m sorry, because we’re out and we’ve got a list, and I’m going to ask each one of you, while you’re waiting in line, fill out a card, a speaker card, with your phone number so we can contact you to help us. It is time now that we’re going to ask you to be of help to all of us who are working so hard, and as we work around this country to take in animals that are abandoned, certainly people will come before animals. So we’re asking every single person now who comes as an advocate for the homeless to get involved, and if you don’t have the time, let us know anyway. But in order to speak, I’m asking you, you still may be able to speak, fill out one of our speaker cards with your phone number and how we reach you, because we are going to ask you to go with us and help these wonderful people who’ve had bad luck in life. So next, sir, your turn, please.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Nathaniel Phillips. I’m a resident of Ward 5. Hello, Councilman Creer. I’m keeping my own time also. I think I’m already on the record as opposed to the ordinance. I apologize, Councilman Knudsen. I misspoke at the recommending meeting last. You obviously did not sponsor and would not sponsor legislation like this. Obviously, only, well, there’s, well, Creer would, Goodman would, the pro temp would.
Excuse me, that’s just rude. It’s Councilman Creer who happens to be the councilman.
Sure, my apologies, Mayor. My apologies, Mayor Goodman. In my last 20 seconds, wow, I guess I would just beseech you, Mayor Goodman, since we have very limited time, 10 seconds now, to please, to please stop interrupting every advocate that comes up here. We know more than you on this issue, and the way that you have run this meeting so far is quite juvenile, to be honest. My grandmother had the privilege of hiring your husband as her lawyer upon her move to Las Vegas.
Thank you very much.
And it’s quite disappointing that you still maintain power over your.
Thank you.
And your days are numbered.
Bye-bye.
Hello, my name is Merrick Haji Sheek. I have been a resident of Las Vegas for about a year and a half. I live down on East Carson, ZIP Code 89101. That’s about as much as I’m comfortable telling you. And first of all, I’m in Diaz’s district, and I would like to thank her for not sponsoring the ordinance.
Councilwoman Diaz, please.
I would like to thank her for not sponsoring the ordinance last time. It shows that she’s got, you know, some moral courage. And I would like to take this time to remind you guys that under the Eighth Amendment, that the state or city may not criminalize conduct that is unavoidable as a consequence of being homeless, namely sitting, lying, or sleeping on the streets. This has been upheld in the Ninth Circuit, which is our circuit, so I would really hope you guys do not violate the Constitution. It seems like it speaks more to who your interests lie.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, Mayor Goodman. My name is Ethan Cullings. I reside in 89012. So my name is Ethan. As I said, I am an advocate with For Future Nevada. I would like to stand here to oppose Item Number 70, as it does criminalize homelessness. I know that I have heard from this council that that is not their intent. However, we must recognize that intent does not equal impact. One’s intentions may be good, but the ramifications that passing ordinance 201944 as it stands will have will adversely hurt our homeless population. In calendar year 2019, 251 people were incarcerated in CCDC for obstructing a sidewalk, 88 of which were homeless, and those people cannot afford that. They need a helping hand up, and I implore you to not vote on 201944 as it stands and remove the criminalization element of that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And please make sure you leave us your phone numbers on a card so we can contact you to help. Thank you, we appreciate it. And Ms. Thomas-Gibson, are you here somewhere?
Yes.
Yes, so we will get the cards to you to have them help in the city, please. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes. My name is George Allen. I’m a home care worker. I have clients who are sick and being put out of the hospitals and onto the streets, and they have no homes. What I have to say is that homelessness, not the homeless, but the homelessness without funding for housing is a clear and present danger and a threat to national security. We must find a way to work together and to move from protest to progress.
Good.
I’m willing to work with you and to be in touch with you.
Good. Thank you.
And for a better America.
Thank you. That’s so important, and that’s exactly what we want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Janie Powell, and I am currently a Shade Tree resident. I was displaced due to domestic violence. I’m speaking, I would totally understand the actual idea of having businesses respected and places that are zoned for commercial residences absolutely having their business cleaned. However, under the circumstances, if I were to, for whatever reason, be unable to stay at the Shade Tree, I would absolutely not stay at the courtyard. I would probably sleep at a park that I found safer until I were able to get back to the Midwest or whatever the case may be. So moving forward, I understand that nothing is infallible. I would like to be a part of that process, but it would absolutely be a disservice to myself and my 11-year-old if I were fined $1,000 and criminalized. I’m willing to be a part of the process.
Thank you. Shade Tree is one of our most fabulous partners, and that’s what we’re seeking, that’s what we’re trying, is finding housing for those that can take care of themselves or their children. So please get involved, help us, and I know Kathy Thomas-Gibson and Dr. Hibbler would be most grateful for your help, and hopefully Shade Trees, all the places that we have that are working so hard to house and take care, that you get involved with that. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Mercedes Seyed, and I reside in 89012.
Could you spell your last name, please?
S-E-Y-E-D-I-N. I reside in 89012, but I have the privilege of working with those who live in 89101. I work for the care complex located in the heart of the Corridor of Hope on Foremaster Lane, and I work directly with those experiencing homelessness. A single mother displaced by domestic violence who is working full-time, a middle-aged man who lost everything due to health issues also working full-time. Those are the people we help. The process of them getting back on their feet starts with identification. With the current system, identification alone takes about 45 days. That’s 45 days before they can start to seek employment. If one of our clients is caught with this ordinance or with the past one, it will halt all progress, and if these individuals cannot afford a fine of $1,000, they will be arrested and will have increased barriers upon their release with a criminal record. I believe that you have a good intent, and I ask you to reconsider the language and punishment currently proposed. It is not that I am opposed to clean streets, but I am opposed to the methods in which they are being enforced.
Thank you very much, and just so that you know, we’re trying to help every single homeless person with identification so that they can get back into society. Thank you. Yes, sir, your name, please.
Good morning. I’m Lalo Montoya, political director for Make Throw Nevada. I live on Ellis in Washington. We’re an organization that fights to improve the quality of life of all immigrants and working families here in Nevada. We’re here to oppose Bill 201944. The impact of this ordinance results in the criminalization of life-sustaining activities that put homeless people in danger. On Monday, I had the opportunity to go through a walkthrough with the care complex. As I saw firsthand the services they’re offering folks, just to survive each day, I saw how people are trying to get their birth certificates and IDs to obtain employment. Misdemeanors and fines that would come to this implementation of this bill makes the possibility of employment even much harder, and that’s why I urge you to vote no on this ordinance and work with those opposed to enact real solutions that put people over profit.
That’s exactly what we’re trying to do, so thank you, and please leave your name so Ms. Gibson can go ahead and contact you to get you involved with this as well. Thank you for what you’re doing. Appreciate it.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilman. My name is Jonas Rand. I live at 89121, Unincorporated Paradise. I’d like to urge you to vote no on ordinance 201944, as I have before at the preliminary hearing. I want to let you know that the advocates, like Nathaniel said, have had firsthand experience with homeless folks, and I implore you to listen to them rather than cut them off. Second, I’d like to let you know that the people who had spoken at the 1936 hearing were describing rapes and assaults at the courtyard, and I’d like every one of you to know that if you vote yes on this, you are essentially putting all the people that are going to be arrested as a result of this ordinance at risk of the behaviors that those speakers had outlined at that hearing on November 6th. When you are doing this, you are also, you also need to keep in mind that you are violating the Constitution, because you have no provision in there regarding people who are, you know, regarding shelters having space for them.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, that’s a minute.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................ as hundreds of local residents voiced their opposition. Yet it was the voices of business owners who took priority. The class war you've ignited against this community has emboldened workers now to reject capitalism and its running dogs, tarnish the legacies of this council indefinitely, and fight the ruling class in Las Vegas every chance we get. Go ahead and pass this ordinance like the good rubber stamp institution you are for the wealthy because we're ready to fight you every step of the way.
Next, please. Thank you. Because we're all reading. Wait till the red light's on. There it is. Okay.
Hello, I'm Annalise. I'm also with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I also live in East Las Vegas. The Las Vegas City Council has shown the true erosion of democracy. Only here with the ruling class serving their own exclusive interests can you listen to the voices of hundreds of dissenting residents from each councilperson's district constituency and still vote in favor of your own business entanglements. This government that we have here is not for the people. This is evidenced by the fact that we live in a city with more than enough resources to meet the needs of the most vulnerable. Instead, we choose to lobby our alliance to big businesses and corporations that maintain a ruling stronghold over our citizens' quality of life. But beyond all these things, we must recognize that where there is systematic injustice, patriarchal violence, racism, homophobia, transphobia, colonialism, and endless war at the expense of those abroad and at home, there will be an entirely different system of justice for those who own property and those who do not. And it is built upon a system of white supremacy that keeps millions of poor people, particularly...
Thank you. Next, please. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
She was in North Las Vegas, Councilor.
Hello, my name's Frank Lopez. I live in East Las Vegas, and I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. This ordinance is not an attempt to safeguard the public, the homeless, or the marginalized within society. The sole purpose is to criminalize poverty. And by criminalizing homelessness and poverty and by criminalizing camping, the very right to exist is criminalized. This ordinance also demonstrates that our government is not designed to protect the public, but is designed to protect private property and enforce private property relations. A truly democratic and representative government would be ran by the workers themselves and would ensure that all of the needs of the people are met. It would ensure that everyone has housing, food, water, health care, and education. It would also ensure a proper justice system and a system of reparations to all of those who have been exploited. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, did you leave your card with your phone number, please?
I...
No, it's Frank Lopez. Really, I'm very serious. We want you to do more than just speak and put the council down. We want you involved to help, to be more than just advocates by mouth. We want to see you involved with us to help the homeless, please. Okay, next, please, after Mr. Lopez. And make sure we have your card.
He declined.
He declined? Okay. Well, Mr. Frank Lopez has declined to be part of the help. He just wants to be an advocate. So, thank you very much. And yes, sir, please, again, fill out the card, put your phone number down, show the world that you really mean what you're talking about. So please, sir, your name.
Samuel Blasco, born and raised in Las Vegas, Nevada, currently residing in 89147. As my comments before me, I'm here to oppose issue 201944, which is the item 70 on the docket today. In November, y'all passed 201936, effectively criminalizing homelessness punishable by misdemeanor and $1,000 fine. And there is an intent to pass another one, making the same criminalization applicable to folks sleeping or resting in public areas scheduled for cleaning. These economic and violent attacks against our houseless neighbors and coworkers and fellow students will not be tolerated, and I urge you not to pass 2044. Poverty is not a crime of the poor but of the ruling class. In this case, the downtown alliance against the workers who produce their wealth and your wealth, those of us who are rendered houseless by gentrification and other acts of beautification, being the most vulnerable and being directly affected by this ordinance, we were never brought. Nobody from, like, you know, non-government organizations or from the people were brought to the table. Only the downtown alliance was brought to the table. Be very clear about who your priority is. So...
Thank you, Mr. Blasco. And if you left your card and your phone number, you have a very strong family. The Blasco family has been very significant...
I don't have...
Oh, too bad. They've been very significant in helping this city grow and develop it. Sorry. I thought you said you were raised here. Please, your name, please.
Good morning. Good morning, City Council. I am Maria Teresa Lieberman, and I am here representing Battle Born Progress, but I do live on Craig and Decatur in Councilman Anthony's Ward. And we are here, I'm here to represent our 20,000 subscribers statewide and say that we are opposed to this bill as written, as we were opposed to the last one. But as you've heard from one of my other colleagues, that going forward, we would like to ensure that there is parity and equity in the fines so that those folks that can't afford to even have a car or even have a home, that they're not paying an exorbitant amount of money. So I'll make sure that they have my business card. You also have my information on there. And we would like just to ensure that experts and other community organizations are part of the process, and we are happy to be part of the process.
Thank you. We really appreciate that.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Will Pregraman, P-R-E-G-M-A-N, 11652, Torenzio Court. I'm here in opposition to this ordinance, much like the last ordinance addressing this issue, I believe is counterproductive. You can't really argue that it helps the homeless and doesn't criminalize them when you impose a larger fine for sleeping on the street than for parking a car. We also just, the state just received a sizable grant from HUD that is $10 million to go to nonprofit organizations doing outreach to the homeless. I'm very concerned that that money gets wasted if the trust is broken down between people experiencing homelessness and those providing services such as the city or the county. I believe you should pursue affordable housing as an alternative. These ordinances risk abuse for people experiencing homelessness and could lead to costly lawsuits for the city. That Ninth Circuit decision limits your actions in this matter, and I think you should take that into consideration.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jen Fleischmann Willoughby, F-L-E-I-S-C-H-M-A-N-N-W-I-L-L-O-U-G-H-B-Y. I live in 89113, but am proud to work in Councilwoman Diaz's district. I do want to thank you, Councilwoman Diaz, for voting against the last attempt to criminalize homelessness. I think that we can all sit here and know that it is common sense that somebody who is able to own a car should not have to pay a lower fine than someone who is forced to sleep on the street because they cannot afford to live in a home or rent an apartment. I think that we all know that it is ridiculous to assume that people who live on the streets are going to be able to pay $1,000 fine, and we know that they're not going to be better off for spending time in city jail. So I would like us to consider what else we could do to help the homeless. I left my phone number on the card. Make the Road Nevada has been proud to work with the homeless community as well as with our partner organizations, and will continue trying to do the work that we can to actually help our community instead of just putting lip service on something. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Aranza Marmolejo.
Wait, 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 wait. I'm so sorry. But could you spell your last name for me, please?
Yes, M-A-R-M-O-L-E-J-O.
Thank you.
I hope you're having a good day, good morning and day, Mayor. It's not a good morning to wake up in a city where we are criminalizing poverty, where occupying space during street cleaning can be fined up to $1,000 or even counted as a misdemeanor. Don't you dare say this is not a homeless issue, because if I were to leave my car during that cleaning time, I would not face the same consequences. When they are just trying to survive, we need to be offering solutions. We need to show all our support to these vulnerable communities instead of tearing them down. We won't let you sleep until you give our people housing instead of putting them in handcuffs. And happy birthday.
And thank you. Wait, 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 wait. Do we have your card with your phone number, please? Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Kimberly Estrada. It's really simple. The fact that there's a $1,000 fine tied to this is the issue, because our state still criminalizes tickets. So it's obvious that if someone can't afford rent, they can't afford to pay a $1,000 fine and will be jailed. This is criminalization of homelessness. And I just want a piece of advice. Don't tell a directly impacted person to do more, because waking up every day as someone who's going through these issues is doing more than, I'm sorry, any of you sitting up there will do. And I also just want to say that there are so many groups, before you tell me that I need to get involved, there are so many groups here that we are with that are honestly on the ground, working with people. These are the experts. Directly impacted people are the experts.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
These are the people who should be making decisions, and I am doing something by standing up here and opposing this.
We appreciate it. We appreciate your help. Thank you. We have it. We have it. Thank you. We will be calling. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Pacoli, 9740, Verlaine Court. I am an attorney. I'm here in opposition to items 71 and 73. I wish to read into the record statements made by Victoria Seaman, Councilman who is supporting and sponsoring the repeal of the open space ordinance.
Excuse me, what's that, Mr. Pacoli? Let him start again. Because you're speaking, you may not have been here at the beginning of the public comment. I advised everybody that if they spoke now, they would not be permitted when I opened for public comment at the time of the hearing of the agenda item. So I wanted to make sure you know here you have a minute. You may have a minute there or a little bit more. I'm not sure. But I just wanted you to know that not speaking at both...
Hi.
So you want to go start your minute again, but I just wanted to offer you that option.
My question to you is, as an attorney that represents some of the homeowners, am I not allowed to speak at the second meeting?
Well, that's what I've said, because we, obviously, we've been doing this now for four years. So I wanted to offer you the opportunity to either speak now or then. Do you want to go now?
Yes. I'd like the record to reflect what Councilman Seaman commented on when she...
Okay, please start this time now. Thank you.
Was dealing with the issue of marijuana dispensary in Ward 2. Her comment is, "Dear neighbor, my job as your city councilwoman is to listen to the residents of the ward, and your voices were heard loud and clear on the issue of the marijuana dispensary. The overwhelming opposition voice against the dispensary at both public town halls, along with the stream of emails and phone calls opposing the dispensary that have come into my office, make it clear to me, the residents of Ward 2 do not believe that the subject location is an appropriate one for a marijuana dispensary. Therefore, I have asked the applicant to withdraw the application for a special use permit." Using the very statements of Councilman Seaman, there has been so much opposition to the repeal of this bill that I would only say that please follow your own statements.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next, please. Is this person that I see coming or reincarnation? Hello, your name, please, sir.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. For the record, Mark Vincent. I am a resident of Ward 4, Councilman Anthony's Ward. And I'm here today to speak on something not quite as important as homelessness, but in favor of items 17 and 18 under your deferred comp plan. Somebody who know me as retired CFO from the city of Las Vegas. And when I retired, I had less than 19 years of service, which wasn't a big deal, but I had a deferred comp plan that I had with the city, and that enabled me to take a retirement for medical reasons. What you probably don't know is, the average retiree has about 20 years of service, and so the deferred comp plan is very important for them. We started back in 2013, I think it was, when we first initiated. It's been an issue for decades on the costs of plans, deferred comp plans. And the biggest issue was having multiple plans where you've diluted your assets and you're paying exorbitant costs. You're paying about half a million dollars a year. Excuse me. You're not paying. We're paying. The participants are paying half a million dollars a year in costs on those plans. And so the idea of consolidating them to one record keeper is going to be a significant savings, not only in the terms of record keeper, but your consolidated assets are going to allow you to get access to mutual funds that you wouldn't otherwise get because you've consolidated your assets. Anyway, thank you for the time.
Thank you. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Wait one sec, please. There, you're on now. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'm speaking in favor of number 70, but I suggest us an amendment. The cafeteria at the county building is empty, is not used after 3:00 or 4:00. Right now, they don't even have it. They aren't even using their kitchen. I would like an amendment to explore adding additional entrances on the outside of the building and gating inside, which would allow the homeless to sleep on the floor, a carpeted floor, warm, with a kitchen, classrooms, and a computer lab that sit idle overnight.
I think I would appreciate your calling, Commissioner Chairwoman Kirkpatrick. And that's the county building. There are 38 acres there that the county sits on. I think it's a good idea, but they would be the ones, not us.
I'd appreciate it.
So if you would, please give them a call, or that's Ward 3. Which district? Who is your counterpart?
Weekly.
Lawrence Weekly.
Yeah, he's very good. But I was looking for a resolution saying consider.
Well, we can't do that with some, you know, property that's not ours, but I think that's a great idea. So if you would, follow up, please. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, I'm going to close. Agenda item 12. Move on to 13. For possible action, any items from the 9:00 AM session that council staff and/or applicant wished to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Protem, what have we got?
Well, right now, it's pretty quiet, Madam Mayor. We don't have anything to obey, strike, or table at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to 14. For possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the December 4, 2019, regular city council meeting. May I have, I would like to make a comment here. Before we go for approval of the minutes of the last meeting, I was not in town at the time of the last council meeting, and I know there was a vote taken to go back to one meeting a month for our planning commission. But I do want to voice my opinion on that. As business should increase, we are here to serve the public. And should it look like these meetings, it started 6:00, I believe, are running more frequently to midnight to make sure that we are accommodating the public and meeting twice a month rather than just one. I think we are here for the public. Our planning commission that works so hard and is here, they're appointed positions, not elected. Each of us gets to appoint a planning commission. And like ourselves, we work at the behest of the public. So I just want to make that before you go ahead and move for your approval, which I say, please go ahead, because they're accurate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. But before I go and move for my approval, is there something you want to change?
No, I just want to make the staff alert to that as we find the time is running, because I know our staff is here all day, and I know even right now in the clerk's office. Last night, we had a planning commission that closed at what time?
A little after 8:00.
A little after 8:00. So our city staff starts at 7:00 in the morning, so when they're going to 12:00 or 1:00 or 2:00 in the next morning, and then have to be back at work. It's a little challenging.
Without a doubt.
So I just wanted to make a record that I really am very sensitive to that for the public, want to make sure that we keep a good eye on that, which I believe Mr. Summerfield said he would and would advise. So just to have our planning commission on alert that we can't do it past midnight. Hopefully, we won't have to do that. So it's just making a record.
And I've totally have the word of the new chairman, Lou DeSalvio, that if it go, they will, all of them are up for a second meeting, so the public doesn't wait. Yes.
Wonderful.
So, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the December 4, 2019, city council meeting.
Thank you. There's motion. Please vote and please post. Okay, motion carries. Let's move on to agenda item 15. This is on the consent. Items 15 through 61 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, recommended for approval by departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Note that the record should reflect my abstention in items 39 and 40 because they pertain to the medical marijuana industry and related businesses, and one of my sons is involved in that industry. I will be voting on the other items. And Councilwoman Seaman, I understand you wish to make a comment regarding item 15.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We start off the new year the way we ended it, with another request for more funding for Badlands litigation defense. This is exactly why I'm so committed to taking the steps necessary to help create a pathway to resolving this situation... to resolving this situation for the residents of Las Vegas. Until that time's come, till the time comes, I will support this additional funding. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, are there any items that council wishes to bring forward? Okay, Mayor Protem, may I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent items number 15 through 61.
Thank you very much. There's motion, please vote and please post. Thank you, the motion carries. Okay, we have a time certain set on Agenda Item Number 62, so let's, let me take a look. Mr. Hart, are you here, Ms. Hart? There you are, so sorry. Do you think this is something that, I have 10 minutes of 11, we have a time certain issue at 11, is this something that hopefully, is there a long presentation? In which case we have to wait, and I'll just take a recess.
Mayor, we have a short presentation, so I think it shouldn't take more than five to 10 minutes, but it's certainly your discretion.
Perfect, then let's move it. And that is Agenda Item 64, or which one?
64, and also calling forward 68, which is a separate vote, but the same transaction, so there'll be one brief presentation.
Can't do it, okay. I'm sorry to pull you, I'm looking at the time, that took two minutes of it, and so to read both of them, I can't even get it done. So if you will take a seat, we'll be right back after, we'll just take a brief recess for six minutes, and so we're here, time certain, on Agenda Item 62. Thank you.
Jane Garden, we are respectfully requesting that this matter be held in abeyance until the February 5th hearing. Mr. Schoenfeld is currently in mediation with six other attorneys and four experts, many of which are from out of town. So that would be the initial request, Your Honor, that this matter actually be held in abeyance so Mr. Schoenfeld can personally attend. I'm not sure if the counsel has a position on that at this time, but that's what we would ask first. And if the counsel denies that, I do have some other comment, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back to you.
We're ready to proceed at this time. And as far as his request for abeyance, as I mentioned in briefings yesterday, I was going to leave that to the counsel's discretion.
Okay, and I think while we all have been included with the information and background, I am going to take the liberty of giving this to Councilman Anthony in your ward. And as we proceed, any council members, as you have questions, please just tap on the table or put your hand up or something so I can see, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor. So I understand your request to obey this. Couple issues, though. Number one, this was scheduled two weeks ago for today, so it should have been ample time to be prepared for the hearing today. The second, which is the bigger problem, is according to the report, there were two undercover operations.
I'm sorry, Councilman Stavros. Our clerk wants me to make you aware. It was two months ago, not two weeks ago.
Oh, was it two months ago? I'm sorry. I didn't know that. Okay, it was two months ago. That's even worse. So, but the main issue is, according to the report, Metro did two undercover operations there, and there were two soliciting for prostitutes, one in each case. So the issue is, I don't know if prostitution is occurring there today, and I don't know if it's going to occur between today and the day that we obey it. So if you're, if the owner of the business wants to shut the business down during the abeyance time, then I think we could probably entertain that, and we have to prove that it's shut down until the hearing. If she doesn't want to do that, then I have no reason to know whether illegal activity is going on there, which means you're going to have the hearing today. So if you want to ask her that, or if you know what the answer is, then you can tell me what that is.
Respectfully, I do not know the answer to that. I don't know if the counsel will give us a minute or two to discuss that.
Yeah, I mean, with your permission, Mayor, yeah, if you want to discuss that, that's a minute, that's, I'll leave it up to the mayor on that.
And I just want to say, obviously, we submit that there is no such activities going on there currently. And without going into the specifics, the one first allegation was in 2017, and the second allegation apparently was from 2019 with no issues since, and there's no convictions, actually, in any related cases. But without going into the substance, Your Honor, I would maybe like about a minute or two to discuss.
I'll let the mayor decide that.
Thank you. We'll give you two minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Is that all right, please? You can step down where it's more private and there. So we'll just hold a quiet recess here for two minutes, please. Hey, thank you very much. You are right on time. I'm proud. I like people who stay on time. And now we're having a private conversation.
Okay, we'll go ahead and state it on the record.
Yeah, let's keep it right there.
Okay.
Councilman, do you want to take it from here?
We'll hear from Mr. Curtis and where.
I believe Mr. DiMarco has one more thing to say.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you for giving us a few moments to discuss this. I have a proposal. Procedurally, we were going to be making an objection, we are making an objection, to the fact that there's no live witnesses and testimony, and obviously, our client has a due process right in light of this impacting her right to earn a living, and also property rights, which the Nevada courts have found to be entitled to due process. My understanding is there's no witnesses here today on behalf of the city, and that everything comes from essentially police reports, which, as the counsel is aware, are hearsay, and it's our position are inadmissible, and there's no ability to cross-examine witnesses. So preliminarily, we would assert for today that the complaint should be dismissed on that ground alone. If the counsel is not agreeable or does not agree with that position, we would ask that as a offer of compromise that Ms. Dai would voluntarily relinquish her license in exchange for the complaint being dismissed with no fine being imposed, and that that would resolve the issue for today, for purposes of today. My understanding is the city is asking for fines to be imposed. So with that said, unless the counsel would agree with our position and with the offering compromise, essentially, if the court overrules our procedural objections, then we would be done with it today. But if the counsel was inclined to possibly entertain any argument on this, I think they're going to be asking for a $10,000 fine. Obviously, that's a substantial fine, and I would appreciate the opportunity for Mr. Schoenfeld to be here present to address that, and it would only be basically less than three weeks. So, and this is why I think it's important to highlight that Mr. Schoenfeld is the main attorney here. I appreciate Councilman's concern and request. Obviously, shutting down a business for three weeks is a very significant issue, and so Ms. Dai preferably doesn't want to do that. But, so I guess, just to summarize it, number one, we'd ask that it be held in abeyance until February 5th period, so Mr. Schoenfeld can be present. If the counsel does not agree with that, and does not agree with our position on the objections, on the procedural issues of no witnesses being here, and violating her due process rights, then the second, or I'm sorry, the third option would be voluntarily relinquishing the license with the complaint being dismissed with no fines, Your Honor.
Could I ask a question? All right.
May I be heard, Your Honor?
Well, I just wanted to ask and then have you respond, but if, in fact, the owner of the business surrendered her license, then the business can't operate, is what I understand, or can it without her license?
No, it is, this business, the surrender of the license becomes de facto shutting down of the business.
That's what I was.
But I'm not hearing from them that they're all that eager to shut the business down, and what, and what my finely tuned ears tell me sometimes is that the surrender of the license without this willingness to shut the business down means that they're going to try to transfer the license or sell what they have there, the lease or what have you, to someone else.
The only thing I was concerned about, just for my own edification, was to find out that if the owner of the business surrenders his or her license of that business, the business automatically is closed according to city code. If that's not true, and without the license of the proprietor of the business not there and having surrendered, they can continue to operate, that's clear. So what's the answer? If, in fact, the proprietor surrenders their license?
Surrenders the license, the business is closed, yes.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Okay. So, you want to then respond, and then he wanted to make comments, or whatever, you do what you want.
Well, I mean, the main issue here is that the business needs to shut down because there's prostitution occurring in there. So, so if my motion was to revoke the license, which it says here, revoke the massage establishment license and independent massage therapist license for Diana U. Day without attaching a fine to it, you guys are okay with that?
Indulgent, Your Honor?
Because that's the motion I'm going to make eventually.
They didn't agree to the license. No, fine. As long as it's revoked. Right. Save the lawsuit. And it's voluntarily, and we don't have to worry about dealing with anything else. I just don't, I'm still suspicious when they start talking. Your Honor, just to clarify that point, we would also request that technically the complaint be dismissed in that arrangement, but...
No, that's not acceptable. If they want to turn it in with it now, there will be a finding of revocation. There would have to be a finding of revocation.
So I'm kind of, I just, I'm kind of getting maybe a little bit ahead of myself, so that, that's what I'm hearing so far. I mean, it sounds like we probably need to do the hearing, but that, from what I've read so far, that's probably what's going to happen, but we...
Indulgent, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Your Honor, I have spoken to her, assuming, like I said, that the counsel does overrule our procedural objections and declines to hold it in abeyance, which I'm understanding the counsel apparently would do. Am I correct in that?
Well, I, I'm just speaking for myself here, so we'd have to, I would eventually have to make a motion. I'm not going to make a motion to dismiss it, and I'm not going to make a motion to obey it with the building open. So my motion will be based on what I've heard so far, plus the hearing. So if you want to make a recommendation prior to the hearing for me to make a motion on, I'd be glad to consider that.
Well, I will clarify, if the counsel would agree on permitting the license to be voluntarily relinquished with no fine, Ms. Dai would approve of that.
Okay, so, do you guys want to respond to that?
Well...
Relinquish, but as long as it's revoked by city council, so that it is noted and the record was made.
I'm sorry, could you step closer?
Sorry. I'm not relinquishing the license, because that's her surrendering the license, but if the city council is voting to revoke the license, and, because you're not dismissing the case.
My, my motion based on what he just said would be to revoke, it's your recommendation to revoke the license. That would be my motion based on what I heard the attorney say.
Yeah.
We're fine with the revocation.
We're fine with the revocation, yes.
We're fine with the revocation and a surrender of the license without hearing if they're willing to do that voluntarily.
Okay.
We do not want a dismissal of these charges. I think it's important that there is a finding, at least that, we don't have to go through all the chapter and verse of the allegations, but at least a finding of revocation on the record. That's what we're looking for.
So do I need to make a motion for that, or you guys just handle it today?
Well, if he's, if they're agreeing to do it, we just need to have them agree to that on the record, and then I'd ask you to make a motion.
Okay, and just, just so that all of us here that are going to be voting, I'm wondering, and it's a question, it's not a dictate here, but going through you, Councilman, is this a good idea? It sounds like you need to talk with them, and so there's no confusion, so that you bring back to us, when Councilman Anthony says, if I do this, this happens, if I do this, this happens, should we trail this?
Five or 10 minutes might be helpful. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, is that all right with you? Okay. So let's, we will trail this for, what time is it? Anybody?
11:18.
Trail it to, what? Give me a time.
11:30.
11:30? Okay. We'll trail this to 11:30, gives you time to be clear, to come back to us and tell us whatever you're recommending.
All right, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So Stacy, you'll remind me, 11:30. Okay. So now we move on to 64. We will now hear abeyance item number 64 and 68 together. Number 64 is discussion for possible action regarding a disposition development agreement, DDA, between Southern Land Company and City Parkway 5, Inc., CPV, for the sale and development parcel D in Symphony Park, for the construction of Class A multifamily housing office, commercial amenities. And agenda item number 68 is R-502019, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution authorizing the City Parkway 5 to sell parcel D within Symphony Park, located Symphony Park to the north, Grand Central Parkway to the west, future West Carston Avenue to the north, and future promenade Place to the east, for the purpose of economic development without first offering it to the public and for less than fair market value to SLC Development, Inc., for the development of multifamily housing, commercial space, amenities in Symphony Park, Ward 5, Councilman Creer. And here we go, Ms. Hello, welcome back.
And thank you, Mayor. Did you also read in item 68?
I just read 68, that's here. Do I read it again?
Oh, that's fine.
I read the whole thing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. For the record, Bill Arntz, Economic and Urban Development Director for the City of Las Vegas. Joining me this morning are Tim Downey and Alex Wooden of the Southern Land Company, and we're really excited about this project and what it means for our city. Before I explain the project, I do want to make one brief clarification on the record between the prior item that was scheduled at the prior meeting and to bring it forward today after the abeyance, there was an error in uploading one of the documents, one of the lines got dropped in the document. It's not substantive and should not influence or affect your decision, but as a technical correction, I wanted to make that correction on the record. In Section 10, Conditions to Close of escrow, which is Section 10.1, item C was deleted. We would like this added in the final document for the transaction document to be signed, and it should read as follows. Escrow agent is prepared to issue the title policy as required herein, end. So that is the only change, otherwise it's exactly the same as you looked at at the prior council meeting. We've also updated the schedule, the fact that we've lost roughly a month since the last schedule, so the scheduled performance in the agreement has been pushed back 30 days to reflect that all the dates are moving forward from the date of the council taking action. The transaction otherwise is the same, so I wanted to outline the transaction for the city. And again, we're really excited about the project. This is a disposition and development agreement with SLC Development, Inc. This would propose to sell parcel D in Symphony Park, which is a 1.84 acre parcel in Symphony Park. It's proposed to be a sale price of $2,500,000. SLC Development has already purchased parcel C, which is an adjacent parcel in Symphony Park, and they would like to combine the two parcels into one larger parcel to facilitate this project. They would also ask that the city purchase, city vacate West Bridger, which is a proposed street to be, that was to be put in between the two parcels, but by combining the two parcels, that's no longer needed, and this is a very common practice of vacating city right away in order to facilitate the project. The project will consist of at least two buildings connected via a skybridge and a parking structure. The first building is required contractually to have a minimum 15-story structure and contain no less than 200 multifamily residential units. And then the second building, and that first building also minimum, I'm sorry, of 12,500 square feet of ground floor commercial space, which would include restaurant, retail, or flexible office space. The second building is a minimum four-story structure, also containing 200 units, and 10,000 square feet of amenity space to be shared by both buildings. The project is anticipated to start construction in September, October of 2021, next year, and take 36 months to complete. This is an exciting project for the city and for Symphony Park. I think it's validating everything that the city's doing with all the investment we're making in downtown, and the interest for people to move into downtown and live in downtown. This is going to be providing much-needed quality, market-right housing in around town, and our partner is proposing to make a very large investment, and I think you'll be very pleased to see what they're proposing today. Before I turn it over to Tim and Alex, I would like to thank our team that worked on this transaction for the city, Tara Anderson, Tracy Reich, and our counsel, Nick Niarcos, and of course, thank Tim and Alex and their entire team. As you know, they've been building already in Symphony Park and have been a wonderful partner, and we're really excited to propose this project forward, for your consideration today. So with that, I'd like to introduce Tim and Alex, who are going to explain the vision for the project. Tim?
Good morning. Welcome home.
Thank you. I realize this is a long day for you all, so I'll be brief. We are very excited to be a part of Symphony Park. We've already, as you may know, have about an $80 million investment there, and this one will be about another $150 million. We really believe in, we can create a wonderful place for local people to live that's fun and safe and mostly walkable, create some things for them to walk to, and I don't know that we'll ever be able to live quite up to the standard you set with the Smith Center. That's one of the most incredible buildings I've ever seen in my life, but we're going to try to continue to spend more and do better, as rents have continued to rise in the market. And that, I think we can show you some really quick pictures of what we're doing. Can you do that?
Please.
I don't know how to do that. And, you know...
Thank you. We're terribly excited. Alex, again, if you could say your last name, just so that we have it on the record, please.
Sure, Alex Wooden, W-O-O-D-I-N, with Southern Land. It's a pleasure to be here, and thank you all for hearing us. Just some quick site context, as you all know, you're very familiar with the area. As you can see here, block F and G is currently under construction, block C and D is what we are proposing. Here is a rendering facing to the north. It currently, our design team, both internally and externally, with GDA, the Architect of Record on Parcels F and G are hard at work designing the tower and project Bill laid out. It's currently programmed at 18 stories, and so it will provide a very unique project that will hopefully complement the Smith Center and provide a new level of housing within downtown Las Vegas. Here's another view of that project. We're really trying to incorporate varying styles of architecture, so we don't wind up with one big homogeneous, very similar color, very similar styles. We really want to create a differentiated project that is very complementary to our current project, as well as the Smith Center and the hotel that will soon be breaking ground there. Here's a view looking downtown from the amenity deck, I believe it's the 12th floor, as well as along the promenade here. You can really see we're trying to pull in the potential for an art deco type style to, again, to help complement OREC that will be across the street, create a lot of shaded walkways for pedestrian walkability, and really activate the ground floor and area around Symphony Park.
With that, Mayor, members of council, we're very excited to recommend approval of this project. I'd be glad to answer any questions about the transaction, and of course, any questions regarding the design or the vision for the project, certainly allow our partner a chance to address the council to that as well. So thank you very much.
It's wonderful to look out the window and watch the progress. I gather it's the building on the left that's currently under construction on this rendering?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. So you're looking for an eclectic change here, or are you looking for compatibility with change, or you're looking for harmonious development?
It's really a harmonious mix. There will be change from Phase 1, the project that's currently under construction. It will be a wide array of unit types, unit mixes, to accommodate all prospects of renters, whether it be a working young professional, potential, you know, couple that would like to downsize out of an existing home, married couple with children. We will have a wide range of unit types and sizes available in this project.
And how about parking? Because we're always, obviously, we have no garage, and that is part of the downtown Symphony Park, but just wondering, is that part using the facilities that the city has already put up, or are you incorporating that?
So if you look on this rendering, it's somewhat tough to see, but right under block, where it says block C and D, we're proposing a three-story parking garage that will self-park our entire project, including a majority of the retail space. So we are addressing the parking, and we have worked tirelessly with Bill and his staff, which, if I may, have been wonderful, and I thank them for their time, to address the parking adequately.
Okay, questions? Councilwoman Seaman.
Pardon me, Mayor, pardon the interruption, but also, I'd just like to put one other business item on the record. I'd like to mention, we are providing some monies for environmental remediation, so out of the purchase price that they pay, we are offering monies back to the developer up to a cap or ceiling of $3 per gross square feet of land. The site is approximately 80,000 square feet, so this is less than a quarter million dollars and less than 10% of the purchase price. There is still some environmental cleanup that needs to be done. Any monies needed above and beyond that dollar figure would be the responsibility of the developer. So I'd like to put that on the record, and I just want to make sure I put that on the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please, Councilwoman Seaman.
So forgive me if I missed this, but when would you break ground on this exciting project, and when would you anticipate the completion date?
The proposed groundbreaking, I believe, is in September, October of next year. We are beholden to a scheduled performance as part of the documents that you have in front of you, and we fully intend to meet those obligations. If, assuming we do break ground on time and on schedule, then we will complete construction, I believe, in 36 months.
Thank you. Councilman Anthony, anything? No? Councilwoman Diaz-Sanzman? No? Yes, Mayor Protam, please.
Thank you. It is very exciting, and I love to see our downtown be built up like that. In this particular slide that we're looking at right here, it's, I'm really focused on all of your palm trees that you have there. I'm not a fan, just to let you know, I think they're like a telephone pole with a bush at the top. Is there, are you open to discussing that landscaping, if your councilman is open to that? Because palm trees don't give shade, it's downtown, we want everyone to be out and walking, and that, out of your, this project is so beautiful, the palm trees is just like a killer for me.
Of course, we'd be happy to. I think we were just following what was, has already been done there, so if there's a, if we can introduce another plan, we'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I would like to add that these renderings, as they stand in front of you, are still very conceptual in nature. They are likely to change, working with Bill and his staff, bringing in input from the city, planning commission, we will address those concerns.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Creer, you lucky man.
Yeah, tell me about it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome, gentlemen, welcome back to Las Vegas. Mr. Downey and Mr. Wooden, it's a pleasure to have you here. It's a pleasure to have your project in Ward 5. Many of you may or may not know, a team of us had the pleasure to travel to Nashville to look at some of their projects and to see their corporate headquarters, as well as we traveled to a few other places, looking at projects in that, in the area, and seeing your projects and the quality projects that you have developed, the level of professionalism of your entire team, and this is the quality of your organization, put a lot of trust in myself that you're going to build the project that you say you're going to build. Looking at the groundbreaking of your current project in Symphony Park, and seeing how swiftly you moved to go from concept to actually putting shovels in the ground, also lends a high level of confidence in us that you're going to do what you're going to do. lends a high level of confidence in us that you're going to do what you say you're going to do. Um, and I, I just really believe that you're going to build a, a beautiful product that is going to enhance Symphony Park, um, enhance our downtown corridor, and ultimately enhance Ward Five. This falls, once again, right into our project of our Ward Five Works, where we're looking to get people trained, ready, prepared to go to work. And so, uh, we'll be looking to work with you in terms of finding opportunities for people within our ward to go to work. Um, I've said this many times, Ward Five has a unemployment rate of 15%, and we're doing our best to make sure that people are trained, ready, prepared to go to work. And as we're bringing in business, we need to get people prepared to go to work in those businesses. So we'll be looking to work with you on that end as well. Um, and, uh, I thank you for coming to Las Vegas. We welcome you, and, uh...
Therefore, you'd like to make a motion on Agenda?
Therefore, I'd like to make a motion for approval for item number 64.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 64. Please vote. Please post.
Yeah?
There it comes. Thank you, and on Agenda Item 68, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, through you, uh, Item 68, I move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion on Agenda Item 68. Please vote and please post.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
We just hope you move up. I know Councilwoman Seaman, and I know she'd love to see that go quickly. So, please, on 68, let's move into 2020. Please. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Creer, if you'll get with me about your program with...
Yes.
There's such a labor shortage right now. Construction for both skilled and non-skilled, we'd be happy to...
Yes. Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Agenda Item 65? Oh, we're back.
I think we have an agreement on Item Number 62, which will...
Oh, please.
...shorten, shorten things substantially.
Okay, go ahead, please. We're back on 62. Oops.
Your Honor, if I may, put it on the record, uh, subject to council's agreement, uh, stipulation, uh, the licensee, which is, uh, Jade Garden Massage and Diana U-Dye, are going to stipulate to a revocation of their license. They will not be admitting to any of the allegations in the, in the complaint, but they will stipulate the revocation and, and agree that the license will, will be revoked effective immediately. There will be no $10,000 fine associated with this, and, uh, they will be closing the business within the next few days by, by the end of the weekend at the latest.
That is correct. Just want to clarify, Your Honor, consistent with the answer of denial and without any admissions, my client, for resolution purposes, is agreeing to the revocation of the license with no fine being imposed. That is correct.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Councilman?
I would ask that a motion be made, uh, I would, I would suggest that a motion be made for revocation, uh, subject to the vote of the council at this point.
Okay, my motion is what Mr. Curtis just said.
Both licenses here are hereby, that both licenses be revoked for Diana U-Dye and a Jade Garden Massage, and no fines.
Immediately?
Immediately. Thank you.
So the business ceases as of now?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my motion.
Okay. This motion, please vote. This is on Agenda Item 62. What happened here? Yeah, that, okay. That motion carries. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to clarify if the minutes could also reflect that there, it, there was no admission by the client, but for resolution purposes, Your Honor?
Right, and I think Mr. Curtis reiterated that, so the record has been made.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Take care.
Now, we're, Agenda Item 65, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding First Amendment to Sublease Agreement Between City of Las Vegas City and the Economic Opportunity Board of Clark County EOB. To an additional office space, bring in the total leasable area to 1, 1,740 square feet, located 350 West Washington Avenue, redevelopment area. This is Ward Five, Councilman Creer. Mr. Arndt.
Thank you. Good morning again. Bill Arndt, Economic and Urban Development Director for the City of Las Vegas. With me this morning is Lawrence Beasley, who is the Chief Operating Officer of Economic Opportunity Board of Clark County, uh, yeah, also known as EOB. EOB currently leases administrative office space at the Historic West Side School and is a great partner, of course, of ours, not only leasing space, but the services that they provide in the community. Uh, they are expanding and would like to have an additional office space, which would bring their original 917 square feet of space, an additional 823 square feet of space, or 1,740 square feet total. Uh, this additional space would be, uh, under a lease with, uh, one year, with four one-year options to extend, subject to board approvals for EOB. The rent, uh, is essentially staying the same on a per foot, uh, square foot basis, which is a dollar per square foot, $1,740 total. The tenant also is paying common area maintenance costs of 35 cents per square foot, or $609. Uh, and the city, in order to enable, uh, EOB to take advantage of this space, there are some tenant improvement expenses that EOB has to bear. Uh, so the city will be providing an amount not to exceed $12,000 against actual expenses, and of course, we will recoup that expense as the city through the rent paid by EOB. I'd like to thank Mr. Beasley for working with our team, Julie Quisenberry, on this transaction, and also to thank him and his organization for the services that they provide for our community. So with that, I'll introduce Mr. Beasley.
Uh, good morning, council. Good morning, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to allow us to expand our footprint. Uh, we are currently located at the Historic West Side School. Uh, we currently provide services in one suite there. Uh, we are looking to expand our footprint, uh, so that we can provide some better services to the community.
Thank you. Um, is this quick start funding that we're putting forward, the $12,000 for improvement, or is that just a different redevelopment fund?
Uh, again, for the record, Bill Arndt. Uh, Mayor, essentially, this is self-funded through the, the school, so the city owns the asset. Our office manages the property as a landlord, and so there's funds through this lease, as well as other leases that we have at the school. So there's, uh, it's essentially self-funded from, from the property. So we're not, uh, taking incentives from, from other programs, and so all the, the monies from our typical incentives are available for other businesses in, in downtown and in the neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Beasley, too. Um, EOB used to be on H and O and, um, are their facilities still there? Is there leasing there by EOB, or no?
Uh, no, we are currently all housed at the Historic West Side School.
Okay. Because I worked there in 1968, '69, right there. So just little fondness there. So any questions, comment? Yes, please. Councilman Knutson.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Mr. Beasley, do you mind, in the, maybe two or three minutes, kind of summarizing the, the core mission and responsibilities of the EOB? I was aware of historically what they were, but I'm not now.
Sure. Uh, currently, we are the newly re-designated Community Action Agency for Southern Nevada. So we provide services that help with, uh, those individuals who are in poverty. Uh, we also manage the KCEP radio station, which is also housed at the Historic West Side School. Uh, we provide four programs, uh, primarily centered around, uh, family supportive services, workforce development services, uh, English language learning for parents of students in school, and, uh, we currently manage the Martin Luther King Jr., Senior Center.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Councilman Creer.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mr. Beasley, great to see you today. Uh, but there's no further discussion, I move for approval.
Thank you. I think we've heard from council, no one else had commented, so there's a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. Now, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to Agenda Item 66. Discussion for Possible Action to Rename a Senior Center and, uh, Sports Complex Located Bonanza Road, Las Vegas Boulevard, as Dula Community Center at the Dula Complex. This is also on Ward Five, Councilman Creer, and I see our wonderful head of Parks and Recreation. Good morning, I think, still.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Greg Whitesell, Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Las Vegas, with the great pleasure of introducing our Vice Chair of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Mr. Larry Schultz.
Morning.
Thank you, Greg. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, council. Good to be back again, and it's good that we're constantly updating and improving our parks and recreation facilities throughout the city. So today, um, we want to start out by thanking Councilman Creer and his team, uh, for assisting and providing fine support for the ongoing and soon-to-be completed renovation of this wonderful center on Bonanza and, uh, Las Vegas Boulevard. And just in case, uh, let's see, we have that here. Uh, this is the current, uh, footprint, uh, of the, uh, center, and, uh, the facilities currently are comprised of a senior center, of a, uh, gym, and a municipal pool. Uh, the center was closed over the last seven months for significant renovations, and the renovations, uh, basically, you could see some of the work that was done here. This is not everything that was done, but some of the work that was done. And, uh, this affected an ADA compliant front desk. It affected a computer, uh, and computer lab, uh, meeting and restrooms, as well as other ancillary improvements. So currently, the center and the facility is, uh, slotted for the grand reopening, which is scheduled for Thursday, January 23rd at 2:00. So that's the current plan. Uh, Councilman Creer wanted to, uh, name or rename the overall facility, so it's easily recognized within the community and can synergistically encompass, uh, the combined multi-generational facilities that will continue to serve Ward Five youth, seniors, and adaptive recreation participants. Uh, the center complex name will continue to recognize former officer Robert F. Dula Jr., who, uh, was killed in the line of duty back in August of 1955. So that's a long time ago, but that center will continue to recognize his name. So at the last, uh, January 7th Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission meeting, the commission, uh, heard, uh, the story, uh, shared by the, uh, Councilman's staff, and as a result of that, the commission felt very comfortable and unanimously voting to accept the councilman's recommendation that the newly renovated center be now referred to as the Dula Community Center at the Dula Complex. So on behalf of the commission, I recommend that the council, uh, approve the renaming, uh, of the newly renovated Ward Five facility, uh, located at Bonanza Avenue and Las Vegas Boulevard, again, as the Dula Community Center at the Dula Complex. And thank you so much again for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, we're excited about this, and I know the renovation's been terrific, so especially keeping the pool open. So any comments, questions from council here? Okay, Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mrs. Schultz, for, one, your dedication and commitment to our, our, our parks and our city. Uh, you are a, definitely, a committed individual that really cares about the betterment of our, of our parks. I appreciate that, and to all the other members of the, uh, Parks Board, I appreciate them as well for their support on this. You know, if you look at what was going on at, at Dula, um, we had a number of different moving parts that are happening at Dula, uh, and now it's just a perfect time for us with the renovation of the center to make it easier for people to understand about the Dula Complex, because it is more than just a Dula Complex. I, growing up, you know, I thought Dula was the pool, and then you think it was the gym, and then you think it was the senior center, and it is, it really is combined into one. So hopefully, people will realize that when they come down to the Dula Complex, there's multi-facets that are going on there. And, and also, just thank you to our Parks and Rec team for putting resources towards, in, in, in the area that needed rehabilitation. Uh, thank you for coming back into the city. Many times, we're expanding out, and we need to look within, and, uh, this will greatly affect not only Ward Five, but I think members in Ward Three as well, who utilize that, uh, center. So if there's no further conversation, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Thank you very much. There is a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 66. We're thrilled. Please vote and please post. And yes, thank you to everybody that's been involved in...
Thank you, Mayor.
...renovating this fabulous complex. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Councilwoman Mayor Protem Fiore for Number 67, has to do with marijuana, and I have one of my sons involved in that business, um, and, uh, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Agenda Item Number 67 is a discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a retail marijuana store. Licensed for Essence Tropicana LLC, DBA Essence at 2307 South Las Vegas Boulevard, Ward Three, Councilwoman Diaz, Mrs., well, not Maclone.
Darcy Adalby Heard, Business License Section Manager. Um, this item is for a new compliance permit to operate a retail marijuana, um, retail marijuana store. They are one of the new 10 retail locations that were approved by the state. Um, this location that they're moving into already has a medical and retail operating there. Essence, it's their sister company. We did confirm with the state that they're okay to have the third location at this, at this site.
Thank you very much. Is there any comment from council? Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem, and with that, I move to approve Item Number 67.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have already, um, dealt with Agenda Item 68, so we're on to Agenda Item 69. Boards and Commissions, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Wonderful Councilman Brian Knutson to the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition. The term of office for this seat has no expiration date. Members serve until they're replaced. Councilman Knutson will be joining Councilwoman Seaman to represent the City of Las Vegas on this board, if in fact he, um, agrees. Yes? Okay. That'll be my motion. And so, please vote. Lucky you. There you go, Mr. Knutson. Thank you. Welcome. Okay, um, because we have a time certain on Agenda Item, what, seven? What is it?
62.
63, at 1:00, um, and because, um, we have, uh, what I'm going to do is be pulling Agenda Item 77 forward. Um, we're going to take, um, a recess now in order not to mess with that, and I don't know, um, can we, while we recess, can we just pull that 77 forward now? Or do you want a time certain for us to have the closed session?
Uh, Mayor Jeff Dorkey, Deputy City Attorney. Yeah, I would recommend pull 77, read it into the record, we'll go in the back into closed session. If you want to set that till 1:00 on the nose, so we can come back out for the hearing. So we'll do closed session in the back, and obviously, an opportunity to recess and eat if the council so desires.
Okay. So we will do 77. I'm going to read it, and we'll do it immediately. We'll do the closed session now. And we will be back here at 1:00 sharp?
Correct.
Okay, there we go. So Agenda Item 77, I am reading it in. Closed session. Closed meeting is called in accordance with NRS 241 dot 015, paren three, paren B, paren two, to receive information from the city attorney about potential and existing litigation. Um, and then we will be back here a few minutes before 1:00 for the, um, time-specific hearing. So we are in recess.